A brief announcement that you probably already know, but the grade level discussion was postponed from tonight to our next meeting. That is a workshop meeting, but it will be open for public comment for that presentation. The reason for that is it's 160-some pages and rather than trying to give you a very brief overview and then ask for comments, we put it online. It is online at this point and you can take a look at that and then you'll have more knowledge about the entire presentation for the discussion the following week. So do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. And in the other discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Thank you. We have a presentation on the budget reduction proposal.
Okay. All of this information you have seen before. Here. The context behind the cuts, we have put out on the website and made available sort of a three-year overview of where we may go with the cuts. None of them are definitive. Every year it's something that's up for board review, but knowing that we're facing the tax cap each year, we thought that it might be a good time to take the three-year view so that we have some idea of what we can either add or subtract from this year and replace it with other things, as well as have some sense of just how deep the cuts will go if we don't do something differently in terms of A) finding a more sustainable way to build a budget, or B) either override the tax cap, or ideally it will over to change. The context for the budget cuts are that we've generally had in our rollover budgets about a 6% budget-to-budget increase. And for the most part, those things come from contract costs, health insurance costs, retirement costs. In addition to that, this particular year, we also had debt service that's been added because of the high school project and that accounted for a large percentage of our increases. Unfunded mandates continue to come to us from the state. Earlier this year, for example, Jill Bergwitz gave a presentation about the annual professional performance review requirements, which are new evaluation requirements for teachers that require not only the adoption of a whole new program of rubrics to use, in our case it's the Danielson model, but also significant training that is mandated by the state for all of the administrators to participate in numerous days a year in order to be qualified and certified as evaluators of teachers. Common core standards are another change that requires, again, money for professional development because it's totally different from what the teachers have been accustomed to, as well as time spent on curriculum development. The state has not provided any funding for either of those things. Local testing is the third area that just this year, I mean, they have been adding mandates year after year, but just this year, local testing is something that we have to provide as of next year in grades K through 12 in math and English, and then grades 4 through 8 in science and social studies. This is something that comes at a great expense. You have to purchase the tests, you have to score the tests, you have to train people to administer the tests, and all of the tests have to be done online and you can't use laptops. So the scheduling of it is also something that's pretty significant. In the context also, we have a tax levy cap. At the last meeting when Michelle reported on this, as of the latest at that time, and there were still interpretations that had not been provided by the state as far as how to calculate the tax cap levy, but it was looking like it would be approximately 2.8% for us, which would result in about $1.3 billion in reductions for next year's rollover budget. And then projecting ahead, similar reductions would be needed in future years. The things we can control, contract costs, but we have to do that as contracts get renegotiated, efficiencies such as our various energy initiatives that we have reported on, and of course spending, which is where the reductions come in. In doing all of this and in trying to come up with recommendations as far as where to make the cuts, we try to keep in mind the vision for our graduates, which is that all graduates will be lifelong learners who are inspired to pursue their dreams and contribute to the global society. We realize that everyone's dreams are different, everyone's talents are different, and so that plays a role in the reductions because you want to make sure that you offer a breadth of program that will meet the needs of a variety of students because they're not all cookie cutter students. To do this, we use some philosophical starting points in terms of making the reductions. First is that we try to utilize operational efficiencies such as those energy programs we're talking about to maintain or enhance programs. Enhance probably isn't going to be happening much in the next few years, but in the past that was one of the reasons that we tried to save in, for example, utilities so that we didn't have to cut program or that we could increase program without spending more. We try to keep in mind prior reductions when considering new ones so that, you know, if one year a particular building got hit hard, then we try to spread out the pain of it and, you know, realize that we already hit this department or this building and try to balance that a little bit where possible. And along with that, distribute cuts across the buildings and across the district. Maintain programs while increasing scheduling efficiencies, I'm sorry. That's the idea of higher class sizes but offering the same courses. That's essentially the premise behind grade level schools, for example. Make reductions that will have the least impact on students. So for example, when we've cut clubs and athletics, we try to do it in ways that have impacted the fewest kids. Marco, for example, in his first cuts, tried to limit the equipment budgets or chaperone budgets so that he didn't have to cut program. He just took things off the fringe and kids were still able to participate fully in the full range of sports. In clubs, the two secondary principles look to things like clubs with low attendance or clubs that are similar to others. So if you have a few clubs that are art-based, you might reduce one of those clubs because kids will still have some art clubs to go to. If you have clubs that are about respecting diversity, respecting others, you might cut one of those and limit it, you know, instead of having three like that, you might have two that are similar. And finally, we still have to be able to manage the district. So that brings us to the proposed reductions for next year. At the district level, we are looking at another .5 clerical. If you look at the prior reductions, we've already cut clerical staff from there. The other district position is the itinerant nurse. The position wasn't filled this year, as you remember, it was in the budget. The person who held the position resigned because she needed a secure position and up until tonight, we had absolutely no replacement. What we decided to do, however, was to hire a permanent sub, similar to the permanent sub teachers. The person would not get benefits, but we would have the coverage that the nurses have so strongly fought for. And what this will amount to is a savings of nearly $33,000 in the budget next year because that amount was never taken out of the budget. So the $32,000 is the difference between what it would be to have her employed daily and her dean amount versus what the full itinerant nurse cost for a full salary and At the high school, we're looking at cutting the last remaining greeter and another halftime clerical person. At the middle school, we're looking at two teachers, one of which is definitely recommended to be a grade six teacher, reducing the dean of students to 10 months, cutting half a custodian and half clerical. One thing about the middle school program, Steve Malkisher is going to be presenting on March 12 about how that cut would impact program. And so he will have ideas at that time about where that other teacher is going to come from and how it will impact teaming and classes at the middle school. So he will have a separate presentation about that. For both the high school and middle school, because these positions or these things impact the secondary, we're looking at the athletic trainer, still providing consultant services to do the work of an athletic trainer, but not hiring our own employee. $42,000 is what we would save as the difference between what the athletic trainer costs us as an employee and what the service would cost through a consultant. We're looking at perhaps reducing some more clubs and athletics. Also on March 12, Marco is going to be doing a presentation about what that $25,000 would do in terms of the athletic program where those cuts would come from. And then K-8, we're looking at the summer academy. Again, on March 12, there's a presentation about the summer academy and how the program functions so that you have a better sense of what the details are surrounding these cuts before you have to make your decisions for April. The reductions for elementary are, for the most part, in the area of grade level schools, for regular classroom teachers, that would be grades three, grade four, and then two positions in grade five. .5 librarian, .4 art, .5 clerical, and one office monitor for a savings of just about $500,000. And then subtract the costs. We had said that we need a library monitor, so essentially the office monitor becomes the library monitor. They cancel each other out. We talked about a one-hour monitor at each school at a cost of $5,000. Facilities work, moving expenses, and instructional materials for a net savings of $458,000. We have talked before about the enrichment program. That's a savings of two teachers for $190,000 for a total savings of 1.1 million. And you might ask, what about the remaining $165,000 or $166,000 that needs to be cut to make up the 1.3 million? Right now, the governor's proposal calls for an increase in state aid of $185,000. If the legislature ends up approving that, that would be where that difference comes Future years, costs for those other two years that you have in that packet that was online have used this year's numbers at this point, and we will go through and update them as time allows for future years. Right now, we just make the decision one year at a time, but before the end of this school year, you will have updated costs projecting increases over the next two years. Reductions continue to cut across all levels of the district. Grade level schools you'll see in the presentation on the 28 would continue to be a major source of savings. Savings from programs such as Energy Ed are not included in the reductions because we're looking at really just reductions when we talk about this, but as we said earlier, the savings really offset some of the reductions. And to be honest, because utilities costs increase, we're not so sure that it's going to do anything more than balance out, but we will have more information from Energy Ed before the next meeting. The district is committed to changes that need to be made in contracts as we begin negotiations with each unit and employee. We're hoping that as the state stabilizes its own economy, they may provide more state aid in future years, which would reduce the need for cuts. And in a future year, the board may decide to try to override the tax cap levy in hopes of achieving 60% approval so as not to have to make as many reductions as those dire predictions forecast this time. Questions from the board?
Anything? Well, let's just start, I know this is still preliminary, but, you know, the idea of a couple of years down the road, no clubs whatsoever. Yeah, I personally don't like that, but how can we start thinking about how we can have clubs that don't cost what they do now? I mean, what would be the mechanism to put in place?
Well, part of it would be if you were to renegotiate stipends as part of a future Part of it would be possibly to look where you have some clubs that have two advisors. I mean, it's not that many, but maybe you could look at a way of reducing that to one Clubs can fundraise to become more self-supporting, but they do a lot of that as it is, and that's still money coming from the community. That's really the offhand answer.
So, I mean, does stipend is the big number? Is that where it's at right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, not necessarily for each club, but when you look at the number of clubs we have, we ended up, I think Michelle gave me a number of about $90,000 for that third year of cuts. And if you were looking at eliminating most, not necessarily all, but keeping some of the really big items like yearbook because what would a high school experience be without a yearbook, or senior class advisor, or student government, without some of those big-ticket things, you're looking at about $90,000 that clubs cost us just at the secondary level. So, you know, each one, I mean, it might be, in some cases, they're under $1,000, but they add up. But it's certainly a place to start.
Well, speaking of, I mean, adding up, I mean, I know I've said this before, otherwise, and you and I have talked, I mean, when you look at this, it's almost all, you know, positions and, you know, areas, athletics, clubs. I mean, there's still, I mean, I know we've taken some small 5% cuts across the board and supplies, but I think it needs to be presented. I mean, it's a big budget, I mean, as far as number of items. I mean, who's going through that, I mean, line by line? I mean, there's a lot of things that are within that budget that aren't here.
Michelle does.
Okay, well, we need to start seeing some of these things because, you know, we sit here and have discussions about $5,000 items sometimes when there are things that, you know, we're not spending, you know, we're saving $5,000 or we might not need it. I mean, we're not seeing the variance in categories year to year between the budget and the actual. You understand what I'm saying? So, I mean, there has to be some other things that we can at least be adding to this to show.
I think the problem is, as we said before, we've done a lot of those smaller cuts. We've taken percentages from each building's budget. We, you know, tried to make savings on things like not printing and publishing the dialogue, but there comes a point when those small things.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, there's, I get, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but those are four line items as far as operational supplies. Now, hopefully within those, you know, the schools have, it's at their discretion how they spend that money, correct? Right. So, but looking at things, and again, I mean, I've seen the whole budget, I mean, I can't tell you all the line items are in there now, but looking at each line, I mean, you have a report that says, you know, we need to start seeing maybe a little, very categories. Let's just say, you know, bulk paper, I mean, we do buy proposals, right? I mean, have we even talked about, you know, we've talked about it before in small items, all this paper that's going home? I mean, can we get to this, can we get to the point where we're, you know, PDF world? Or, you know, I'm just saying, I don't see anything outside of positions or, I mean, I know that's a big bulk of it, but if you're talking about little things adding up, we know that there's some other things we can do. I mean, we've started some of the things in the board policies and we need to keep going with them, and I hope to see some more, you know, some of those items. I mean, there just has to be.
You know, part of it is, we can talk about that in the operational efficiencies. I mean, I'd use the examples of the Energy Ed and the energy programs.
Well, that's one, and we talked about that, and that's going to be, hopefully, a significant number. I mean, they could offset, you know, we have to prioritize some of these at some point, obviously. And then I had a question, I guess it's more for Marco. Are you going to tell us in your presentation exactly what you recommend, or are you going to say, here's a couple of options? Like, I mean, I know we've talked about eliminating entire level, that's kind of your philosophy because you're, you know, maybe reduce certain sports or whatever. I mean, are you going to, are you going to give us two options or at all, or are you just going to say what you think?
Basically, the, give me the, what the $25,000 recommendation is for next year. And that is going to be, we're able to cut back on just about everything across the board and still maintain our programs.
The three levels?
But after that, we're going to talk about, we're at the breaking point where next year and the year after, we're looking at cutting possibly a level.
Okay, all right, that's, that's. Anyone else?
Michelle, what about the Bosse's budget? I mean, I don't know, it's a pretty big chunk of our budget, about 10%, maybe less, but, and there were a lot of items in there, and I don't know, do they all happen, are there any variables or options that we can eliminate our program or that we have to look at?
Yes, we updated the appendix in the budget to show some of the programs that we participated with Bosse's. It's approximately $3.1 million for this year. The initial service request that we put out and that the board approved for next year right now is about $2.9 million, but we've requested detail on all those areas that we subscribe to of Bosse's to see if we in fact can do it for any cheaper, given the fact that a lot of the coasters get 63% of Bosse's aid. So we're definitely looking at that and we're looking at it.
And we're stuck basically with the budget, we can't go outside that for as hard as Bosse's?
No, we do go outside. We are required, even if we decided to outsource everything we currently do with Bosse's, including our special education programs, we will still be required to pay. I think this past year was $197,000 in administrative costs. Next year will still be $190,000. But if you look at the new budget packet that's updated, you'll see that we use Southern Westchester Bosse's, Ulster County Bosse's, Capital Region Bosse's for different types of services. We still get our aid ratio on it, but some of the services may be more cost efficient and even better for our students, so we use a multitude of Bosse's.
Yeah, the whole premise of Bosse's is shared services. I mean, that's a lot of the talk, and that's basically what it is, two or more school districts that need the same service that can administrate it and other costs can be shared by them, and they get the portion of the service that they require. And we get aid on it on top of that, which is usually at a higher rate than our own aid, so that tends to be why we head to Bosse's quite a bit.
I had mentioned to you four presentations already that were going to be at the March 12 board meeting. One was Marco's presentation, one was the secondary principles about the impact on their budget, one was the summer academy, I guess I mentioned three. The others that we're going to include, there are two others that night also. One is about the technology staff that we have and the role of each person in that department. That is a question. And the fifth one is about AIS at all levels, how the students get placed into AIS programs and what the requirements are in terms of what we have to provide and to whom. So those will also be March 12.
I just have a, just your opinion on, and I'm not suggesting this whatsoever, what's the idea of half-day kindergarten? I know a lot of people have gone, it's a big number, and I know a lot of parents I've spoken to actually like the idea. I mean, I know, I mean, what's, I mean, I know it's not, I mean, that's such an age that you've had to come back to where it becomes more and more important the way we progress in education, but just what are your personal thoughts?
My personal professional opinion is that it's something we should do as a last resort. I think that, given the standards, given the testing requirements, when you look at half-day programs, and I don't mean this to be funny, but, you know, kindergarten teachers will tell you that by the time the kids get in, especially in the winter, take off all of their clothing, their outer clothing, and then have to bundle up again to go back home, they really don't have much time for instruction. I would say that, you know, yeah, there are some parents who would prefer to keep their kids home, and there are many parents who could probably provide very good enrichment kinds of activities and learning in that setting, but not all kids would necessarily get the same equal kind of experience. And so personally, I would like to see kindergartens stay full-time as long as we possibly could.
One of the charts you gave us showed us that we had, we have the three psychologists and three social workers and it compared the ratio to the R6 to our kids and the other schools and in the area. And we were, at six, we were quite a bit lower than most of the other ones, even if the reduction that was called for that five, we're still a better ratio than everyone but two, I think. So I see you have half a social worker, like, for a year down the road, or a psychologist.
I also updated the budget packet, and this is on the website, at the request of one of the board members, to show if we reduced, what you're talking about is six, it's three psychologists, three social workers. And essentially, I mean, there are differences between what they do, but at the same time, there's enough overlap that if you just said, reduce the six to five without necessarily specifying which or, you know, which is which, maybe half psychologist, half social worker, their new ratio is there and it's still very, very favorably compared to the other districts. It's a little over 300, I think it's 1 to 318.
Right, we went to five, yes.
It's five.
That was down to 2013, the second year down, I was just wondering if it might be something.
But I will add that principals have said that they have never seen as many emotionally troubled kids as they have this year alone. Reporting number of instances from secondary schools, middle and high school, kids who have been hospitalized for suicidal, either threats or actual attempts, more depression, more symptoms like kids cutting themselves. I think, you know, my gut reaction is it's related to the economy and kids are feeling stresses at home, certainly as families are feeling stresses. And we've had very, very emotionally upset children, kids at the elementary school that have never experienced, that we've never experienced the kinds of behaviors we're seeing even from them, in some cases from kindergarten students. So I'm not saying that we can't cut, but at the same time, be aware that we're getting a very different kind of clientele in some respects than we have ever seen before.
Well, I mean, I know, I've brought, I've brought this up before, and I know we looked at it and it didn't, this was kind of outsourcing, you know, snow plowing and grounds and, I mean, because I'm seeing, I mean, you've got facilities on here, then three years, two years down the road, you've got eliminating grounds person, a maintenance person, I mean, are we at the point where we need to take another look at that to see if, you know, I mean, I know there's some legal, uh, bar, Michelle?
We took a preliminary look at that when I started last year. There are some contractual issues surrounding that, and there's also some other timing issues as far as, I mean, the school's ready and sets up the plowing, but it's not to say that certain areas cannot be looked at, and we have been discussing this.
Anyone else? No? Thank you. Comments to the board? Anybody wishing to speak? We have the mic, we have a minute time limit, try and stay close to that, and step up to state your name, please.
I'm comparing the budget this year from like last March, so this one was dated January 9th. And there's a lot of discrepancy with no explanation. For instance, like just enrollment of students attending other schools is now 16 and last year in the estimate, or was 64. So I gotta believe that's a significant savings. If we used to have 64 kids we were attending other schools paying for, now we're paying for 16. I mean, it's, it's all through here, it's, that's just one number, but I was wondering why these numbers have changed so drastically and without an explanation? If I knew the explanation, maybe I wouldn't be bugging you right now.
We'll go through it and try to provide the explanation. We'd have to look, and, I mean, obviously, just as you gave us one example, we don't remember them off the top of our heads, but we'll go look and we'll try to edit.
It's like a librarian, too. You had like four, uh, now you have 380,000, last year it was 240,000. I mean, I know it was a big increase, it increases, but dang, I think I know a lot of budget goals.
The average salary, not 10,000 points of benefits. But I see, I see your point about explaining the difference.
Okay, so that's, yes, significantly higher. And then I just had a process question. So on the consent agenda tonight, the, um, seniority list was approved, right? And what's the point of that? That's, what is the point of that? How about?
Essentially, um, the seniority list determines people's job rights in the district.
Okay.
And so we have to keep it as accurate as possible because in times of layoffs, in particular, it becomes extremely important. And sometimes there are people who are actually days apart in terms of, you know, one took a leave for four months, one took a leave for six months, and it has to be as accurate as possible because it could affect a person's employment.
So that was approved tonight.
Right.
And yet, what did we tell teachers on February 10th? On the, apparently on the website?
There was no change to the seven bottom teachers on the seniority list in elementary.
So when was the prior seniority list approved by the board?
January, just last month.
So you do it every month, year? It just changes?
Usually it's every year. We had some difficulty with change in personnel from Rose to Courtney to Nancy. Um, there were some things that sort of got lost and, and we also transitioned to a new system. Instead of using a database that had been developed more or less in-house for us, we moved to finance manager and that shifted some of the records around. So Michelle essentially sat down, often with the teachers' union president, and checked each person's file by hand. And we, in this latest rendition, just corrected a few things that teachers brought to our attention after the list went public in January.
So we're lucky that that didn't happen to be some of the bottom seven, huh? Or we just?
Well, I wouldn't say lucky, because the bottom ones were looked at extremely carefully and then the ones on top, you know, we gave a little less time to because we knew it was the bottom ones that were the most important for layoffs.
And then I'm a little confused, too, that, um, we seem to be in the infancy of our budget plan, correct? I don't have an approval for pretty much anything, right?
Correct, yeah.
So why are we telling anybody anything at this point? It just seems a little premature to be telling people, hey, you're not gonna have jobs anywhere, the board hasn't even.
Well, the board did approve grade level.
They did approve that, but that doesn't say, they approved grade level, but they did not approve reduction of class sizes.
They did. They.
I don't even remember that vote.
January 9th meeting, I believe it was, to have five sections in every grade level except grade five.
But that doesn't necessarily equate to?
That's four positions.
Alright. Um, I, I would like to have the board have an actual class size that we're approving at some point. I mean, we always seem to teeter on, uh, waffling on what number we're willing to accept and it really makes decisions kind of arbitrary or difficult if you're not having a limit of what you are willing to accept and what you're not willing to accept.
I can say just on the outset, we certainly could not go over the contractual guidelines without concern. So that would be really more the top end of the cap.
But when we've asked that, you've said that you can go over and that the policy is they talk to the principal.
Well, there are guidelines.
So again, it's not even a set, it's not even contractually, the limit isn't a limit.
Hi, I'm Dave Webster. I have two questions. One was about the energy study. The woman that was in here, I don't know her name, she offered to provide references.
Hey, could you speak up, please?
Yeah, I can't. The woman that was in here doing, uh, the energy study, she offered references. I'm wondering if we get the due diligence to check up on that.
Yes, I'm checking for, um, the presentation that she had done and I thought of again, um, with several school districts in the area and, and, um.
And, um, I picked this up on the way in, it was from the governor. And, um, his proposal, he suggests four items to help with this cap. It'd be user reserves, freeze wages, healthcare contributions, and cut salaries or administrators. And I was wondering, in keeping with the spirit of this, I didn't see many of those up there on the presentation.
I mean, most of those are contractual and it would be legal for us to do the last three. Um, we have a contract with these individuals saying, you know, the governor, unless he gives us the authority to, which he has not, he's told us to do it, but he's yet to give us the authority to do it.
Did anyone explain this to him?
I, I don't know him personally, but I, I don't, yeah, it's, it's, it's just politics. They're telling you what to do without you having the ability to do it.
In the spirit of this, he, um, he also didn't want layoffs, teachers cutting programs or arming.
Neither do we, but unfortunately, that's the only spot we have to act within without.
I'm thinking giving some feedback that these things are gonna be enacted, or maybe we'll change.
That, that's part of the reason, and actually it wasn't the governor, because I don't think I'd get a personal audience with him, but the, part of the reason for the three-year synopsis was to call, ask Senator Salon to sit down with us and go through that to show them what the tax cap is doing to the budget. They also told us they would not enact the tax cap without significant, um, mandate relief. That didn't happen either.
And one more thing with the reserves, I think you've been using a longer suspension in the last two years, is that correct, Michelle?
Yes.
So the one we can do, we've been doing.
Jim Gill. I have a daughter at Hagan and I have an incoming kindergarten. I know you volunteers and you all want to spend some children, and I like the mission statement that we have. I'm concerned that we're starting to run our schools like a business. Business, they wanna cut costs to maximize profits, that's not how schools operate. Um, I'm afraid that my daughter's experiences going to the school district will not be the same as children five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and part of that is economics. I'm afraid also that this tax cap that the governor's put in place has caused this board to react rationally. And that never works out. I like when the superintendent said that we should start with the little things. I know Mr. McCollum, like, well, hold on, we're talking about 5,000 here or there, it's really bigger costs that make the difference. But I think there is something to say about starting with costs and every little bit adds up. And maybe this is something for the next discussion, but when it started with small costs, one thing I was looking at was a monthly gas stipend of $400 a month. And then I was thinking, well, if we're gonna have, let's say, ten or 15 school buses making a run, not like Hagan to Nassau, you know, 15 buses every day, even math is fuzzy, I'm sure it is, I'm not a math teacher, but if a one person, monthly gas stipends 400 a month, how much cost are we adding by having buses going across the district every day? Would that be, you know, 6,000 additional monthly cost, you know, per month and then 60,000 a year? If that's an additional cost, well, then maybe saving a teacher is part of that bus and the money you're spending in additional buses. So I just wanna, I just wanna say I'm definitely concerned and I don't want this school to be run like a business because we're not trying to maximize profit here. We're trying to maximize shorting, we're trying to maximize potential.
The cost of busing for Alonso right now is based on the cost for a bus per day, um, with fuel. So the estimate that we have used is $65,000 for a bus run and we went from 11 bus runs several years ago and now we're down to nine bus runs and under grade level schools we continue to have nine bus runs.
Tech coordinator, nine presentational drive? Just wanna read the statement, so I don't leave anything out. Um, I moved over, I moved here six years ago after almost a year of research in school districts within a reasonable drive to my office. Although clearly more expensive than most of the others that I looked at, I picked Spackenkill based on the success of students, graduation rates, test scores, college acceptancees, a cohesive community, neighborhood schools, and great parental involvement in the community. As the gentleman just said behind me, a lot has changed in the last six years. The district is an upheaval, tension abounds. The last board meetings that I've been to have been brought with emotion, anger, and a total lack of confidence in the decision being made by the administration and the board who accept most things with little questioning. I took a look at a number of our neighboring schools' websites, in particular the Redwood School District. They have a section on their website called applause, kudos, plaudits, and encourages people to submit success stories of current students and also grads from the districts. They have a blog, too, that is very different from ours. There's a thank you letter from the superintendent, an article by him touting the success of a high school play. Some of the websites list accolades that the district has been given by top high school in the country, by the Washington Post, scoring 81 points higher, 53 points higher than the national average. Redwood partners with Bard for science, foreign languages, debate club, vocal, instrumental music, art, and environmental issues. Here's what's on our website, a blog with over 200 entries with people fighting with the administration, the board, and each other, badmouthing schools and individuals. Our headlines also read Todd Middle School in Need of Improvement, newspaper articles about grievances filed with the state, announcements to parents to attend meetings to learn how to manage transition, clearly another example of insulting people's intelligence. We are no longer the district that I could barely buy a house in six years ago, instead we have become mediocre at best. People are asking me, you know, what's going on in Spackenkill? Instead of saying, wow, I saw that Spackenkill was just named by the college board for the highest scores on the A P test, however, that was one of our neighboring districts. We, however, did not even put the names of the honor roll students in the paper like every other school did. The complete disconnect of the community is apparent. Communication is deplorable and despite making feeble attempts to get input, it's rarely acknowledged, utilized, or paid attention to, and often rudely dismissed. By grade level schools does not impact my child, the process, the poor decision-making and sloppy accounting as it relates to actual savings does. We need more than a three-year plan to address economic concerns. Instead of dismissing some of the very thorough alternative plans that have been presented, I, I ask you to look at them. The people sitting in this room behind me are intelligent, reasonable, committed to providing their children with the best educational experience they can have. Many have made significant, significant financial sacrifices to live here. I ask you to start thinking outside the box. For almost four years, the only creative idea to save money was grade level schools. And clearly, grade level schools is not saving money, it's cutting teachers once again. Look at, look at, look outside the box, look at consolidating the two schools, maybe moving sixth grade back to the elementary school or fifth grade up. Look at other ways to apply for grants. Look at the fund balance, look at our reserves, look at the educational foundation. In the three, and look at your plan where it says, as has already been mentioned, eliminating all clubs. I ask all of you here, if you have a child that's looking at going to college, this is what the admissions offices are looking for. A strong academic record is very important, but it doesn't separate all the students that all have 4.0 averages. Extracurricular activities like sports, clubs, volunteer work, leadership opportunities, art and music, these pieces are coupled with a, with a highly recognized high school and that's what's gonna get them in. Getting rid of all these things, reducing A P offerings, field trip for enrichment, scholastic competitions, what do we have left? Not very much. Let's look at the things that you have in the third year that need to be cut. Primary projects that aren't here for years, it was a grant, we don't have the grants anymore, so why do we continue to fund? $5,000 can cover a lot of things. What's going on in the last two, especially in the last two years, needs to be a wake-up call. Our district is failing our children and community members are talking about looking at private schools and moving to other districts. We have many outstanding teachers, principals, and other administration staff in our schools. But if we continue to make these cuts, it's not gonna matter how good they are. We need to look at administrative contracts. We need to reduce the district office. The budget, this budget or anywhere else can no longer support on almost $200,000 salary for a district our size, car allowances of $4,800, high bonuses, and a very large administrative support team. We need to start looking at cuts there. Those are large dollars, okay? Instead of constantly looking at what, take another look at the mission, it's about directly impacting children. Positions need to be eliminated or combined. We need to do more with, more with less as we all have, have had to do with our own jobs. I implore the board, board not to cut trips, clubs, sports, art, and music, but above all, make a commitment to bring Spackenkill back to where it once was and do not allow us to be overshadowed by our neighboring districts. For the amount that we have paid for our homes and taxes that come with that, manage, manage our money more effectively and efficiently, provide top-quality educational experiences for our children, stop cutting programs and teachers, and look at the top for cuts. And above all, honor your commitment to listening to the community. We elected all of you to represent us and with one exception, that has not happened. I ask all of you to spend some time deciding if you should remain in your positions, because if you have decided to stop listening, continue to accept administrative decisions at face value without question or challenge, agree to contracts that are not fiscally sound, or you simply do not want your job anymore, please move aside and let other people take your place, people who will fight for our children to make Spackenkill one of the top districts in the country.
Hello, my name is Dean Friedgen, 21 Cathy Road. Um, if there's one thing that's clear to me, it's that we're in difficult times right now. And it's not just in the school districts, but it's in the houses, it's in the economy, it's in our jobs, it's everywhere. And as a parent with a kindergarten or here for the first time, new to the district, um, it's not always clear to me what's, what the decision-making has been, and it can get frustrating at times. One thing I really wanna know as a parent is, is how and why decisions are made. It sounds like even the board is struggling with this sometimes when understanding certain items on, on the budget. Why are things made? And it all comes down to lines of communication. And I do really appreciate that certain people here have been willing to meet with me, um, that you've been willing and open to online, uh, you've had online forums for people to post suggestions and whatnot. The two questions I have, I'd really like you to address, so I can get a clear idea of this and others in the community as well. Number one, how is community feedback so far helped to shape the budget that we're looking at? And number two, in your opinion, how can we in the community most be beneficial to finding ways and savings, um, to helping work with the district rather than against it?
Okay, um, I, I think so far, um, there hasn't been a lot of budget discussions specifically this year. And past years, it has helped. I mean, we've done things and we've had community members come up with ideas that we have gone and run with. We've eliminated the DOT, reduced dialogue, almost eliminated it. We've done some different things, um, mailings, we've made it some things more electronic, try and cut down some costs there. What are some other, some ideas that have come from the community?
Well, positions last year that we were looking at ended up being saved. We were looking at, at one point, just one of the two enrichment teachers, and that was as a result of feedback from the community, certainly the guidance counselor position, as Nancy says, one of us comes to mind.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's true, one of the community members.
F A T prep class. So there are things that either people come to us and say, do you really wanna keep this? And then we're. the tax cap, and there's a number we have to get to, it's not an optional number. Where before, we had to balance it against what would the community pass and what wouldn't the community pass. Now we have to balance it against that tax cap, which for us is about two-point-eight percent. So that definitely makes, draws the line in the sand a lot deeper than it was in the past. So yes, we do listen, yes, not everything can be saved because just about everything you talk about, somebody wants, or would not, would rather have something else cut. But you do what you can and try and come up with a decision that can be, you know, go forward and be passed. Not an easy thing to do. And quite honestly, nobody wants, you know, believe me, and I think I've written somebody on this, I am the last person in the world that wants to cut all our clubs and sports. It just isn't right. But when you start looking three years out, and yes, it's even tough to look three years out because the numbers get fuzzier because you don't have any clue as to what state aid's gonna be, you don't have any clue really as to what healthcare's gonna go up to, you kind of base it on the past. But that is not necessarily true. And so you come up with these assumptions, which may or may not play out quite as we project, but it does give you something to go and say, hey, do you know what you're doing to schools? I'm looking at other schools in the paper, you know, closing schools, not closing schools, piqued seeds in dire straits in some areas, but it's because of that cap. And I don't think anybody realizes the strain it's putting on school districts. And all municipalities for that matter, because many of them are locked in the same type of contracts that school districts are locked into.
I'll just, guys, your names, your emails, I mean, I had to apologize, I haven't gotten back to you, but I knew you had talked to Ralph, I can't meet with everyone individually, I'm just busy, but I am meeting with so much tomorrow. To answer your, at least your, how we get the input, I think that was the first question, how are we receiving the input?
Yeah, how are you receiving it and what are you doing with it and how has it shaped the budget so far?
Right, well, so far, I think it's extremely early. It's more of philosophical almost, you know, just chunks, large chunks. Like, you know, over the years, I mean, I sat out there four years ago and didn't like what I saw, quite honestly, and that's why I, you know, ran for the board. We started this packet that you have that, you know, that has, nobody even had nothing like this. And this still, this to me is still a beginning stage of what this budget package should look like. But anyways, all the board members go to at least one PTA meeting, they go to the advisory council meeting to get feedback from the budget because those people, you know, they're in tune with what's going on. And then we have the email, the budget on the website that you can submit input, and then, I mean, every one of us reads it. I mean, I know a lot of people don't respond or do respond, but I mean, sometimes it's just, you know, thank you for your input, but it is all getting read, that I can assure you. And then this is where we have, you have to realize that typically, until March, this room has two people in it that are non-staff members typically. That's how it's gone, and it's getting better. I think people are becoming aware, and like Ralph said, it wasn't as bad, it was more, this community has always supported the budget, no matter what the cost, but in these times, it's gotten tougher and tougher and tougher for everybody, not just before, it used to be the, you know, fixed income individuals that would really fight whatever we were talking about. So, I mean, I hope that gives you a little bit of a framework of where we start, but this is just the beginning.
Well, going forward, let me just say, I mean, I appreciate all the time that you put in, and I know it's not your full-time job. Going forward, whatever we can do to improve relations between the community and the board and the district, and improve communications, I think will go a long way. Clearly, we're not all gonna agree on everything, and it's just not gonna happen, there's too much and too many cutbacks. And as much as I want, everything that I want, it's probably not gonna happen. And that's just, compromise is never about getting everything you want, it's about getting the best deal for everybody. But whatever we can do to improve communications, I think would help.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Kilford. I'm thanking you for that because I have to say, in all the years that we've lived here, which is not really known since two thousand six, the community is kind of in shambles because of a lot of issues that have gone on in the school district. Because basically, Spackenkill's school district, we don't have a town, we've said this before, the school system is our town. And I think, you know, we aren't always going to agree. A couple of questions that I do have to ask you though. First thing is, I think, I don't realize that you think, I don't know if you realize it, but the reason why the position came back for that enrichment teachers is because all those teachers gave back.
Correct.
So I think they need a lot of accolades because they opened up their contract when NICE told them, do not do this. They went on a very slippery slope, they put their necks out there on the line, and I give them a lot of credit for doing that. So, you know, I think that they do not get the credit that they get, that they have deserved. I know that those, you put your, you had given some give backs, I know Lloyd had given some give backs, Jill gave give backs. And I know that, and I know that I'd probably offend you a lot, but you're the only one that got the merit increase. They didn't, nobody else got merit increases for what it is. Okay, so you didn't get a merit increase after you gave your give back?
Other people get merit increases also, other administrators each year.
Oh, okay, so I guess I'll have to take a look into that.
Contractual, it's not that.
Okay, so, okay, I'm gonna add one more question to my list here, or just another, I don't know, begging, please stop doing that. Please stop giving administrators merit increases. It's just not normal, they're public employees. It just doesn't seem logical or reasonable to me to be giving merit increases. It just blows me away. The second thing I want to ask very quickly is the, you said, keep in mind prior reductions when considering new ones, and I totally appreciate that, but when you're looking across the board, I don't think you followed your own guideline because you're missing, you're going to lose four high school teachers over the next several years, four middle school teachers, and you more than double that and lose nine elementary teachers. How does that happen? You know, it doesn't seem like you considered it at all. The groundswork, I'm not understanding if we have less students, we're using less of the facilities, what was the groundswork, the groundskeeper, why do we have to have so many?
Oh, we have two plus a maintenance worker, right? Three plus a maintenance worker. Do you wanna explain what they do? I mean, it really has nothing to do with the number of students per se, they maintain the fields, they do the snow plowing.
Okay, so we're gonna basically put, in the, coming up, if we, if this whole grade level school thing goes through, basically two wings of two schools won't be used, is that my understanding? I really haven't been through the Nassau building, so I don't know how much of that perhaps you want to use.
If you take a look at the appendices, there are maps there, and they'll actually, the better ones are color-coded yet, tomorrow there'll be even better ones in terms of not different, but just easier to read. That shows you the tentative plan for each building.
Okay, all right. And then the local testing, this is an APDR question.
Okay.
You're saying it has to, we're going to incur costs for that, and the local testing, you mean that twenty percent?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding, and maybe it's just the way, because it is all brand-new to all of us as teachers and administrators and everybody else, and absolutely everybody, I can't even imagine what the administrators have to go through with the, it is a huge undertaking, I know the state, you know, as I said, have to do, and they don't support financially. But the twenty percent, why is it that the teachers can't come up with their own assessments?
It has to be a state-approved assessment.
Absolutely.
As they have approved essentially published tests. They've given a list of, I don't know, five to ten, I don't remember the exact number, but the teachers and administrators looked at it together in terms of which would be the best, and the one that we chose is a K through twelve instrument so that we have some kind of comparison basis. But regardless of which one we chose, we would've had to pay for the test, we would've had to pay for the training, and whatever implementation involves.
And what program, are you not using AIMS Web? Is that M-?
That's not one of the approved ones.
Okay, so that's just for the monitoring?
NW, right.
Okay.
It's NWEA maps.
Okay, okay, that's the last thing. And then the very last thing, Ralph, I know that you had said you're the last person that, you know, wants to cut clubs and sports, but you're also the last person that wanted grade level schools. So please keep in mind that you're not the last. And I don't even know what else to do anymore. You know, my husband kind of asked me, he goes, why are you even bothering going? They're not going to listen. But, you know, please, just, you know, like Jim said, put these kids first, you know, that's all you have to do, just put the kids first, everything else is gonna fall apart, please.
Can I address one thing about the elementary teachers? I started getting involved in the district about twelve years ago, my son started kindergarten. I was Hagan co-chair, I was the Spackenkill PTA president, and then I got on the board. Over those years, when I first got involved, we had five hundred twenty-five students at Hagan, two hundred fifty at Nassau. Today, we have four hundred and twenty-three at Hagan and two hundred and three at Nassau. That's about a hundred and fifty students less than what we had ten years ago. So it just kind of makes sense that, you know, we still had the same numbers of teachers all these years, teaching one hundred and fifty less students. So it makes sense to see more cuts at that level because we have less students in a classroom. You know, the difference in the high school is that the kids are taking separate classes that, you know, sometimes you have to have ten or fifteen, or you can have twenty-five, you can schedule them, it makes it more complicated, but the same number of kids, you know, the number of kids has changed drastically at the elementary level, so it makes sense.
I'm just truly hopeful that these same kids who keep getting, I can't even think of a nice way to put it, I said, to keep getting pushed on, I said, you know, and have to have, you know, higher teacher-to-student ratios and whatnot, they get to middle school, it's gonna be the same excuse, they get to high school, it's gonna be the same excuse because, you know, kinda like Jim's saying, they're not going to have the same type of education that your children have had in high school, your children had throughout Spackenkill. So it's a challenging thing, you know? I think, cut wherever you can, cut teachers less.
Well, let me just, just like what you just said, cut teachers less. We would love to cut teachers less, which everyone in this room needs to do, everyone, including the board, the administrators, we need to contact our politicians. We need to contact them in Albany and say, listen, we need some mandate relief. We cannot provide all the services that you're making us do. We're doing our best, but now you've taken us, you've put our hands behind our back, you've cuffed us, and said, now do it with the same exact stuff except for do it with less now. So everyone in this room doesn't want anything to change. I don't want anything to change. We need to contact and start reaching out to them and saying, listen, we're trying to do our part here, but you're not giving us anything at all. I don't wanna put the blame on them, but there's a lot of unintended consequences, I think, that we're done here. It's a great idea in theory, absolutely. If you think about that, do I want my taxes going up? No. But am I willing to sacrifice the services that I've always had? I grew up here, I've gone to Spackenkill, I went to college, and I agree with everything that had happened and that I went through here. When I got to college, it was a joke, quite honestly. I was getting less homework at college than I was in high school, and I'm still the same way. And referring to other districts, I don't care about what other districts are doing. I want our kids with a solid foundation and education. I want us where we were or we are and where we're gonna be. That's what we have to start looking at. Can we get a exception to this two percent? It'd be tough. We have a lot of people in the district who don't have kids in the district anymore and wanna hear that two percent. We discussed it, I've thought about it, do we think we can get it passed? I don't know. And is it worth taking the chance going from a two percent or two-point-eight percent to a zero? I don't know if it's worth risking every one of our child's education or anything, the sports, the activities. I wasn't a huge educator, a academic kid, I was more of a sports, clubs type person. Do I, I'm along with Ralph, I don't agree, we're losing it. But in order for us to do this, we need to get the politicians on board who are in Albany and say, hey, we're doing our part, you need to help us out. But that comes from everybody out here, they're constituents, we're their constituents. I hear that a lot, but unless we're gonna actually step out and say to them, give us a hand, we're not doing what we can.
I'm Marty Schatz with Spurway. I think there's somewhat of a lack of context that we have here, and I'm gonna speak to you, but I'm actually speaking to the guy behind me, because I've been coming to these meetings for about ten years, and these meetings are light years better than they were. If you came to a board meeting five years ago, you spoke, it was silence. You got an email, they did not talk, they did not respond to the public, it's true. The board's been a lot better than they did. I'm not saying it's perfect, district has some issues, okay? But the feedback has been a lot better. One of the things that I think I wish had happened with grade level schools, not about the decision, about the process, would have been to include more community people earlier. I took a peek at the grade level schools report, I won't talk about it now, so I'll be back here in two weeks. But some of the things I see in there were due to community members, like George and Mike in transportation, proven document. Because our district works the best when the administration and the board gets the community about. We have a high school that would not be the way it is without a citizens' high school group. We have two less buses because of people in the district who fought for it and sat on a committee. When my daughter was in fifth grade, in class, Kelly Kilford's daughter, was going into first grade, there was an emergency meeting in the Todd Library at the end of May to cut the first grade class, in May. Okay? The boards didn't know about it until that night. There was about fifty people there, it stopped, it did not get cut. The point I'm trying to make is that people do make a difference in this district. It doesn't mean that you're always gonna get the result you want. Now, I know we're not here to talk about grade level schools, but to me, the three-to-two decision does not mean it was a bad decision, it means it was a tough decision and reasonable people could look at the same evidence and disagree. It does not mean that people weren't heard. In a democracy, you can be heard and maybe not get what you want. That's how it works. All right, there are times though, and tonight's an example, in which, I know I keep saying this, but you gotta provide more information. This packet, I don't, how many people printed out the packet from, I know I'm still talking to you guys, but, on the website? Okay? There's a packet, it's forty pages long, okay? It's got lots of details. But I would, my critique of the presentation was, now everybody's got this packet, I'm a crazy nut, I printed it all, just a PDF. But most people in this district, if they haven't been along up, don't know about the enrollment, right? We're gonna cut seven K through six teachers, that's not a good thing. Okay? I come from a family of teachers, my wife works in the school district, happens to be this one, all right? I don't wanna see that happen, but it can happen in this district because of the point I reached, talked about. My son presents at sophomore college, graduating Spackenkill with a class of one-sixty-five. I have a tenth grader, he's in class of one-thirty-six. I have a fifth grader, she's in class of one-eighteen. That's what's happening with the district. The only outlier grade is the one that's going into ninth grade, it's got one-forty-eight, otherwise at the downward slope. Okay? If you see seven teachers getting cut, you're gonna say, wow, these people don't care about teachers. But it's not true. The enrollment has shrunk. With grade level schools next year, the average elementary class is gonna be twenty-point-five, that's pretty good.
But look at the next years.
Well, I'll get to that, you're right. Next year, there'll be a lot of people on these seats, I can't, I'm actually surprised, there's not that many people.